Or rise to the pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now called roll, councilmember Braswell, councilmember Bion, councilmember Mazola, councilmember Ryan, mayor O'Neil, all present.
What we have here today, I want to get a little informal concrete meeting to see what has been done and what's on the agenda for the Barrow Island for the next couple of years. We're going to be trying to all be, work the jobs that have been done, that we can recall, that are done to be done, work the EPW did, work some of our engineers, specials that done, our architect on, available. So I would like this to be, you know, informal, but getting in and, you know, a little bit question and answer as we go along on each item that will come up. We're going to start off with Mr. Romeyer, please, correct? Yep. And we'll go over what's out of our, our end zone and things that have been done. These are active projects that we're working to do. This is something from Romeyer from CNH, he is our engineer for the panel. He has a council meeting later tonight, but he has a second here. I'm going to go ahead and ask that.
Very good, thank you, mayor, council, members of the public. Real quick, I want to go through some of the projects that we're working on, capitalized through municipality, a little group, some questions, feel free to ask, see what I can answer for you. First one is one called John Purman. This unit is a project that's initially funded by DOPRAN, we have $225,000. If you drive through the municipality now, you'll see that construction has commenced. This project generally includes replacement of the sanitary sewer system, a little bit of drainage improvements to pick up some isolated oak points, water, replace some of the concrete and then repave the roads. Keep a look to a...
Wait, hold on a second. Remember, down towards the Bay Avenue and the Warren Street, my cat's in this house. Basin does retain water, okay, it was done off in North Street, down the North Street project, this is to alleviate that problem. The reason it took a little bit, you see, it's a $697,000 job, we chased $225,000 to offset the costs. It's a, you know, strengths, take a certain amount of time and certain amount of work to get that done. Along with that project, I should be able to tell you this really...
That's underway now, um, there are a couple of these done, drainage done, hopefully next we've got a phase before our weather setting.
One thing you will see in, like I've shown you here, is looking through it, think that was watching for fish now, because of our sewer system, we're wanting that flow to influence, not the sanitary water that's already input. And in some cases, where the sanitary water comes out of it, and causes a problem when they're feeding. So that's what you'll see in the front side of that.
Next one moving forward is the current CPG project, the development of concrete project. It's in, um, it's also located, it's also in the street, it's an active project, currently existing on Second Shore Lake Cedar, I'm here to bring in this section. By annually, the verb is eligible to apply for money being paid for CPG's by improvements. This property will include, um, concrete improvements along shore, mainly in some of our end cap ramps, improving on 3D accessibility, which aligns in proag, and on Cedar, there's going to be additional concrete work and reconstruction of the road itself. So that project, we can just open the A's, CPO's construction is our part of ours there. Going to work with them, they're going to get done pretty soon, you should see them around in another two weeks or so. Now this could be a feeder from Sag, of course, at the dry side. Correct, that's correct. It actually, by second, yeah, it's just completed, no construction, we've been frustrated about it. Uh, the third one down, brands over Chestnut and Oak, and Andrew Good. Um, you'll see, actually on the end of that, uh, screen, I'll be... What's happening now is the gas company, CNH, has completed, uh, retiring some of their names, you have to send, replace and upgrade their system. Uh, your current work here requires some to do some substantial agency restoration, if we're repairing roads after they're done serving them. Um, so they're really wanting to take advantage of that opportunity to get and dress up the area with concrete gutters and curving along the edges of that road to control water from growing along the edge of the base itself. So that project actually was just awarded also to CPO's construction, uh, at the last council meeting. It's, uh, it's under that 335, and that was the designated amount. So first, we jump in before the gas company comes back, we do, and it'll end up with a really nice finished product, uh, section.
Now, part of this, but we've had, we've had already worked to take care of paving on those roads, just by chance, the gas company, yeah, a month or two, so we're still trying to, and we worked out, Mr. Tom, oh, the gas company's picked one, paving on that one?
Yes.
So we don't have to pay the gas company for us to work with it for heck of a road, or anything.
I'm up here.
But I'm sure you've just seen third one, so, as I keep saying, if you've been out there, you'll see where you go, Chestnut, the oak, that corner where you drop down, you do the one, uh, somebody's place, and the third one, the health shop, the water, down, main system down.
Uh, what project, and one I was thinking was the Jones Creek and Cedar Street, all over there. So right outside, we know here is the end of Jones Creek, we just walked past recently, what we see here is the oak, that gas, fifty by number eleven, in D1, so. So what's happening with the end of that Jones Creek, um, is the head wall, the timber head wall, whole head, tingers deteriorating, water's coming in out, really, there's no resistance inside, ties there for, um, presenting if you come back out into the system itself. So what we're doing this time, we're expanding the CPG boards, we're expanding some certain materials, and we're working on developing some appropriate designs for replacing that head, that bulkhead of the Jones Creek.
That's the walkway range of that, for me. So we should, most of us, help from Mr. Daniel's age, the mind to do, I play right in front of that still, right? We're gonna, we, we band-aided it up, the class, you can look out, we've got someone who can help us fix that.
So working out a long foot on down this area, five blocks. The replacement, um, head wall will have to be, the A, on board, armies, um, will be replaced in the same position, we need pedestrian walk will have to be removed and replaced on a vision similar to a type construction, pedestrian crossing, and then some sort of tide control systems later here, by being an internal check out, something that's, uh, remaining, um, resistant to bridge, uh, probably, my word, properly.
Let's get the other question?
Yeah, let's get, yeah. No, that's, uh, we're complicated, space, and it's not clean in, in our scheme. I don't have to say any kind of, uh, pump could be down, or whatever. You know, first we find out if this works, and we don't need it, it's a topic, I mean, you're not just going to do that.
Right now, it is, it is really an immediate need for attention, um, now we've just done public work, it's easy to try to stop down the, uh, the backflow condition, it is really causing many, that is, material water, and so on.
Now, hold on a second. Hi, Ian?
Well, let's be nice, well. The part that I'm talking about, right under the pedestrian, right? Yeah, we're just talking about twenty-five section, thirty-two section, two more.
So we're against that?
Yeah, um, I took a question, um, what's your name, it's been what? At the top of all, that section, I'd like to consider matching with the D's. Well, if you make sense for a little more, if we have to deal with FEMA and we deal with whatever I've mentioned, that could be a possibility. I don't know that right now.
Okay, so are we going to have to say if that wall gets rid? Oh, we're not doing the red wall, right?
What wall?
This one, guys, Marie, please.
No, but he's saying if we have to match up to the D's.
Right, this, this right here.
The walkway.
This walkway, yeah, so we just need more capacity, right? We need to get more capacity, I don't see that right now.
You have to be on the same scale, the walkway might be high, I would tend to say it's a little too, I don't know, you have to be down that far.
And the project's just limited to the particular section, we're not looking at the entire line, we're looking for it.
But if you put something new on there, it has to remain something, this has never been, you know, that.
What, yeah, they're saying you, what, the, you know, pretty good sound?
No, they're wrong.
She can ask that out for a, it's to be made out of something more durable than wood, hardwood concrete.
You, either, either epoxy coated steel, with, with current modern, um, heat specification, cold specification, that would resist, um, integration, like you're seeing, I figure how to work some sort of concrete.
Now, we're looking at different types of, of the outfit, so, now, also looking to address the street, and that Cedar, Cedar Street, by the time, similar, it's, um, it's not acting as a drainage feature itself, it's just a typical, just for free, uh, to do, uh, appropriate, it's really, it's like, something similar to, it's a little strip of oak that's been stuck a lot, and, and just washed out and some of the, the doggone
I just have one quick question on the project over here, is that, is that CPG compliant yet?
I don't envision that part becoming media compliant, um, I guess that would depend on, on each source, right? If there's a requirement for it, it's not currently, um, you are limited at that, on, on the south, on the east side, you have to really, if you're starting to get, get compliant, I have to, probably, we'll, we'll finish up without it here. So we have to look for other accessibility and cross, like, yeah, so that's from this side of, of your wheelchair system.
I was just curious, once you get people like DP in New York or, or, I wonder, I would just be that, yeah.
Uh, the, uh, one of the, one of which, uh, is one of the, so, first, just to me the project that we'll, um, I might be still on this one, really, I all know on Jones Street. So there is, uh, used to be called the, um, NTP, by the home structures, from EIC, now it's first with the ITH, uh, the skating finding stores, but also the road, just going in, and sometimes principal for, um, infrastructure improvements and true water quality infiltration and frequent facilities themselves. So, um, we'll be going to the ITH, the, there's an application for, all those, all of areas that were highly, normally on the path, uh, primarily to fund renewable replacement, grab these sanitary sewer systems. Uh, what's happening at this point is your sanitary sewer system is experiencing, uh, regular grades, plus, as it's deteriorating, and is at a point where, um, the most of your sales are upgraded at this time. So in his current condition, you're getting a lot of infiltration from ground water, rain water, and that is, um, he's available for, um, for treatment, once he goes up to the water treatment plant. So in addition to, um, costing a lot of money in treatment, necessarily, water, they lose to the system, they're also losing in pass the system, so we're seeing so many instances around town, where there's heavy breakers, and, um, the specific dead service of, so, we're looking to the ITH to fund a larger scale, to replace the, and grab some some swamps that, uh, we do.
All right. Kim? What were we on first? Okay, his team have already, like, announced, um, Travel Point, basically, North Street, pump station, and, um, like, yeah.
Right, right, the, um, this, that's now, it's the main trunk line that runs down the Bay Avenue, uh, from the west side of town, down to the pump station, five, maybe, uh, for municipal trailers, which is going, uh, that should be this part of the system, uh, that's the main trunk line, coming down to the bottom portion of the street, uh, what we did, surveyed and, and picked up the existing conditions and assets, first, pipe site, pipe considerations, and a lot of all the contributing flows to, uh, the installed flow monitoring devices, that, that's a few points to, um, to confirm whether or not our calculations of how much flow should be coming into the system is what's actually occurring, and what, what we're able to do is to tie directly weather events, rain events with surge, if the flows come through your sanitary sewer system, so that immediately tells if you have, uh, you have infiltration problem, uh, it's being caused in the system from rainwater, in addition to this flow, that comes from the, the tidal waters, right below the surface, I'm sure it's already, very, trapped surface here, or to down, you can watch the tide, and, and, so, you know, six foot eight sanitary, meaning that's, uh, as old and as, as, as prepared, and constantly taking rainwater and, and, so, you see, this one passing now, this, um, along the avenue, should be drunk on, um, this is to really understand, you know, there needs to be improvements made at the pump station, and the system needs to be upgraded in size for capacity, so, we looked at, uh, stripping flows and the water in the pump station, too, um, and began with a few ideas on base to balance out the flows, and under a scenario that a lot of, I'm not actually, we're back in the past.
I'm sure we've been one of those, who was working, might not be too amazing, so.
Kim, can you comment on where we are in the process with ITH at this point?
Um, we are actually, Drew, probably here from CNH, he will explain it, because it is me, but, uh, we are, had our first, from all of them, um, where they have granted us to be fifty percent, forgive this portion of the joint, so there's five million would be to the tech, I mean, and twenty-five percent off of the EIC stuff, the whole, that's a ratio, uh, for the Barrow, uh, we'll get quite far for that. Um, and then we have, uh, several reports to send in to them, that the process is going, your high cash flow is going, and along with PMA.
How many grants are just going to be there?
One. One.
At the end of this, six seconds, the word that, if you come here, to be able to tie back, that grant money that we get, you gotta front this, this probably, you don't front all of them, then we'll be able to tie back, you know, and cover the cost and maybe, just set it all.
That's great, um, so what happened was, I have one of our partners, Paul, and talked with DP and I, they had granted us forgiveness, um, back to when I first called them in to come looking some of the storm drains and sanitary line that had, um, high people, now raised, um, here at the D, we had closed D, so they have granted forgiveness for eighty dollars that is in the center of that line as well.
One second, go.
Uh, yes, Chris Grant, you're three, six, seven, three. Have you measured the I and I, what level are we at now, and what do you think we're going to go to? Is that a base?
It really is, um, from our flow monitoring, uh, Mr. Daniel's guy, I think it appears that this anger twenty to thirty percent of your actual load is, I think, is one hundred and one, it's a substantial number, um, hundreds of thousand of dollars.
But basically, so something, you, you, we've been pushing for you.
I, I, I'm, I'm, yeah, like, what's, yeah, not only is it direct cost to your pocket, us being hooked into the process system, we're regulated by how much sewage we can put into the system. So we want to take, take that down, and that one thing, we won't be challenged, okay? Of course, and of course. Um, just want to touch quickly on South Harbor Park, for those of you that don't know, uh, it's the Barrow platform, pump, you know, the state is on, and received a grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, one-on-one max requirement, um, what we're doing at this point is, so getting the, uh, how to have CTO back funding in place, for, for the facility, by direct style, through this building, uh, it's earmarked for, um, replacing the fence board, basketball court, and I'm breaking the, uh, parking lot at the end.
So, we feel somebody can probably, just, I'm sorry, when we go into this, bring in the sanitary system, jobs out, we're talking, we've been requested by, should go on Travel Point, and we'll be tied there for more, test for, and, 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 it works for us.
No, let's, you know, ask your question.
Yeah, uh, Kim, I want to see, I'm just a quick question, would we, would we actually , so, we, so, um, to me, see, I, 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 Well, we could always have a next, um a big spec that goes out for the project, an option to see what that costs. That's not.
Um Pittsburgh Shore Drive, there's a number of people in town that support the skate park and they're looking to find ways to renovate and rebuild the skate park. Um my concern is that if the town just goes ahead with the existing basketball, tennis court, that's what limit us on the skate park as opposed to configuring the whole area out. Is that being taken into consideration?
I I think I can answer that. Uh I'm the liaison to the open space committee. We've discussed it extensively. Um right now, because the equipment that's there is damaged and is causing and is a potential problem for safety issues, we would remove the skate park that's in there now. It would become a grassy area until the community is at a point where we raise enough money and then we could actually uh install a skate park.
I think that's a little short sighted based on what some of the grant and foundations might need from us and knowing their minimum scope might help us actually incorporate skate park into this. I know it's not part of that project. I just don't want us to redo this and find out we lose that on a skate park because nobody thought to shift the course and go that one way or another.
What's really good about this is that those skate boarders, so keep that. That's what I just mentioned.
I I understand the safety concerns with the existing skate park and I'm okay with taking their thinking. I just don't want us to shoot ourselves in the foot for a future skate park.
There's a certain aspect that you need to consider for the equipment, whichever way you go, for or not. So I mean you can leave that consideration, make sure that's there.
I'm working on it. There doesn't come to be a part, I mean it's done now, we just finished a second one. Um so I have a good idea on cost, square footage, um play value on, so the area that you have a power, you may think it's a little bit into the parking lot, I think you'd still get a really nice facility. Um if contractors that actually can provide those facilities are really down practice themselves, so it would be a good project, a standalone project rather than have a PC and stuff. I I could get tons of options with that space of them.
So the next part, the next two are are really not um are not involved with, is there anything else we want to jump on on here?
He's done a road before he's, he's done a road before he's made one road, he's from uh what's his name?
Oh, here. Oh, perfect. I just thought to come up with some kind of an idea for seven one five and down. This is a statistic of that. What is it, fifty six, under part five, fifty one, fifty one part in the box in the center of town, it takes up people. Right, so what we did very quickly conceptionally from available aerial relational materials, tax that one to the dusting, um if you count the horizontal strength, just trust me, we propose some free roads, so down, I would be reparking, um you basically you have to lean off the end, you have to circle around, you come out, uh the other aisle, you have the minimum required, the E A building, um closest to the business along bay, uh preserves the access, uh over the seat. Second, um and ties into that, it's been an emergency access, uh avenue anyway. Um I basically, basically a lot with the previous coverage from what they had previously part of the definitely the municipal building. And uh based on looking at the community on site, involve the brain as we previously uh mentioned, you can do is, you know, the concept was to advance, it could um so maybe some kind of recovery, a security infrastructure, a removal site by any, I'm getting through it. We're reporting there, the time is right. Say that again, we're considering me reporting, and it's one of those kiosk things here, but with a limited scope of time. Whatever, so it's mostly, you know, that area of passage, you know, six AM, something like that, so I think it should all be around there. That's the thought right now.
And then I wanted to show you if it's easier to answer any other question. Rob Sherman with thirty six, is there a process in the parking lot process?
I I we didn't get to that.
This is the ideal. Yeah, but where do you think there'll be an office?
Once I, which is a perfect order for the pool, I can just do a couple.
They look at that way.
I think a powerway moves over if you're not being.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So do you have to go?
You don't have to.
Did you actually like the service, which can lead to bring their ass home? Yeah, I really just, I don't understand the amount of basic battery, I really hope that it's a different material, maybe it's something that's hard to provide an accessible route for a forty day, some people can actually strike, so I initially envisioned which might have a payment issue.
Uh Pittsburgh Shore Drive, we probably just bring this up to the meeting again, but with radius, can we put in rain gardens with other radius restructure, just kind of just ball rolling on that in sense?
All the time it's a hundred cost, we don't have an idea of this right now.
Yeah, man. Hey.
You're supposed to run the skate park to us.
I don't know that that's what I mean.
Am I not it? Actually, it's an idea that you ran through around. It's not, nothing here is set in stone, this is an idea, you know, early enough. Being from what I understand, uh being this was on the bean that cracked, and then we embarked this month, I believe that's the last slide.
That's great, if we were to do like an A O A sales or anything of the sort, you just really would respond back to A O A M in turn.
Okay, that's just something that's uh.
Wave down, you just like.
Sure.
I am good, I just have to pull up this, I want to see other.
Yeah, you're close. I'm back home, um from H two M Architects and Engineers, and we're another early consultant that's just working in a program. Uh because the slide is getting pulled up, uh obviously it's a three bone, uh these more over here. Uh we're uh our our official D, our practical expertise is in tricker and wastewater process engineering, dirt quality, and in the mid grade, it has some of the capital services. Work that you guys have as our utility infrastructure. Um so Doug, you did an excellent job uh to explain uh the topic of what we can consider to now. Our job in particular is one that has a little more detail, uh that has to do with overall the waterway conversation, just around the corner here, that there's a fair number of people in rooms, you may have been, if you've seen it, it's in it's in storage structure, been around uh, it's been ninety years old, uh it's got a stakeout structural aspect, it's a building, uh we've got a little concrete down on the front side. Uh and that station is being well experienced, uh pretty complete animation, they're uh super smart. They uh, in fact, we're sharing some data here.
We're all familiar with what you're talking about here.
Yep, so uh relatively small structure, but in hand, it is to seem to move uh significant portions of wastewater and sanitary issues down this collection. And so it's really very significant, uh they found a very good job uh preparing in the way for that storm and getting it back on track, so to speak. But the uh the problem in here is the station, the way it's constructed, the easier the weather that's now being monitored and used against the regulations that are spoken, um and by our other regulations, um has made its existence configuration obsolete. And by that, that sounds a little, uh what in particular we're talking about here is the location configuration of its electrical infrastructure. All the line power here, emergency power here, essentially all the equipment that is used in the power station running under the building circumstances, and that the event of a big storm, those are all below the flood line, as it's now defined by the year and in context of building infrastructure, specifically it's below the station blood elevation and how the problem is, so the bigger objective of this project is to make sure that if another big storm comes, it's secure, it's shorter than the location where this station will be set up, particularly for the configuration of its electrical infrastructure, also with some arming to the station itself, so we'll be able to ride out that storm and so you will have a fair chance of having the first of that station, especially the fact that it's insured, it's got to be five hundred storm drafts in our lifetime, it's going to be, at least statistically. Um so that's kind of the mini video, it's now says it's a modular structure, so it's not going to change very much from an experience standpoint, it's slightly slipped, um as a result of the work that's proposed. I think the most significant Z O T wall is that as a result of the efforts that have been ongoing for three years now, uh by both their council, this district, and the public board director, and that we're now aligning sort of backwards, you're Asian, I think it appears that FEMA calls in the entire capital cost that's got. So we're working with them now to define the scope of what can be improved. Uh it's a really significant job because there's been a handful of the last half of projects that FEMA and their local, their stated, Jersey O E has, will have to be funded through this.
Uh in in actuality, we got this one, I think that would say, Miss Gonzalez chased this there with a woman from A O A. Yeah, I I remember being on the phone with her, I don't know what's going on down here, I'm no fun. But how you get immediate pipe to sixteen four? Like how, the design was set up, um fire, you know, and through working in steady contact with her, this is where we're at now. It's a big step, just tie into the 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 drainage and sewer plan, that's just all created, it's a big step, making this town function so much better, oh my God. And we all talk about what can't be done at the Pearl Hill, and it always comes back to that, what the issue of Pearl Hill, you know, why do you mind doing what this, why do you want that? But it's a problem, and it's a problem that's being addressed right now. It's a problem that hopefully will be continually addressed through the future and the kind of power as as high as we can get. Do we have to go further than that? It's probably done though. But we have a lot of time and energy and thought, not something that doesn't make this all along this project here. We're saying I'm short on, I'll be honest.
Why is that, Cole? That's not just gonna be part of the project.
I have a question, uh, do you remember when that same building sat down under the bridge? Uh you? Uh you remember, right, Doug? Same brick building, that fifteen thousand fence. Yeah. Same one. I don't lie, when I remember.
Um you know, this is part of the history of the borough, so we're glad to continue to work with you folks. Uh last detail that I'll mention is the project schedule, as we envision it right now, it's also a simplicity improvement, man, this said it'll take about a year from today, uh for everything to be constructed, as long as industry is on board with us and if the O E M is able to image for the project, we'll be working on finalizing coming this fall, doing the design, hoping this coming winter, we can try to initiate construction in spring and have a final event this summer. As everybody knows, who wrote the dirty story, wrote nothing, uh hurricane season is the fall. So our big overarching objective for the project will be to complete, everybody ends it next summer and have this function at a time September rolls right next year, uh in anticipation of in terms of like, in my calculation.
And group of work with Paul and and C N A, you know how when you search for what the door comes out in the new section of Pearl Hill Avenue? That's gonna be alleviated, right there with partners. And hold on, I remember having to put some sand on it, keep popping, I had to pump the sewers, you know, before it's back, well, it's probably running, we got pumper jobs down the other end, ten hundred, all that's alleviated by. Just you know. So. That's our home. We need to uh. Thank you so much, uh thank you very much, thank you for inviting me here this evening. My name is Kevin Settler, we're Settler Architects, uh we are a pillar of, actually, you just can build. And you're in. So let me, let me give you a little background, a little company, I tell you what we're showing you this evening, uh what we'll go through and uh should we take any questions at the end. Um when the borough came to us, so we're in their new municipal building, the uh the location and now the uh current location of the new municipal building is our main technical help, uh with the slide that you just assumed before, but it's still under the top at this point. However, I know we did make a huge useful in regard to the demolition of the buildings, uh most expeditiously, so uh.
And cost effectively.
And cost effectively, absolutely, so this new is probably long, but this is the site that for the new municipal building are laid, thirty six and. So what I want to do with it for you this evening, so I'm gonna take you through the location of the building, the size of the building, how it's sited on the site plan, uh what's uh what's the size of the building, and find out what the building looks like. We have uh some uh renders for you this evening, we have four renderings of each angle of building, we'll leave that there with you, two map renderings, you can look at afterwards, and you have the extra special, we've got some materials of the building, and that's something certain on as well. So if you go to the next slide, please. So uh this is the proposed site plan. Uh the building is a, it's two stories, it's a, it's uh here about fifteen thousand square feet, it's sited uh you'll see in upper radiant corner of the site, closer to the corners, you know that. This is a two level site, um you will enter off thirty sixth, um and uh go up there to the back, fifteen or so uh park spaces will be these business. On the lower level, you will traverse up the site, and let's get started, so this site level, here is the back of the back of the site is about twelve to fifteen feet higher than the lower portion of the site, the entry corner of the site. Uh the rear portion of the site will be done with the public uh public entrance, uh and that would be upgraded with the rear port, and that's created the front door. Um you see some landscaping in front of the building, you see ingress and egress, you can see egress on thirty six, that's about a quarter of the building, you'll see ingress and egress in the lower right corner. We did, we did talk about the, the main public entrance here, the main entrance is uh is on the lower level, the reason we did that was to have a point of our three. So they do have to be favored to the back side and the front of the green blocks. Pearl Hall is a whole pressure, it was about, Pearl Hall is on the, it's kind of stacked, so the rental in Pearl, employees go home, residents should have, you know, the piece of walk, rather than having police cars operating all that. Do you get to write? And it's been a while, see a little box in the bar there? So what I'm looking to do if you don't want, is when we build this again, we're gonna have um, we're gonna have a rendering, and I'll talk about heights of the rendering, so as we talk about it, we can see what, is that okay? Um so yeah, the first, so this is the first floor plan, and as the, as the mayor mentioned, this is um, this is at grade thirty six, so uh where you see that red arrow to the main entry, this is for lease functions only, however, you can also enter at this level, and you will traverse up to the second level, up at a moment, uh to the public portion of the building. The um the yard, ninety-five percent of the lower level is uh lease functions. On the top, you'll see there's an office, on the lower left in corner, you see the salary port, adjacent to the salary port, you'll see the processing center, which is with the two jail cells, which you never see, uh that's adjacent to the salary port, and as well, all these functions, you'll see the internal stand on the second floor, and a main stair in the front of the building, get up to the second floor, public floor as well. So again, as the mayor mentioned, all, as the mayor mentioned, this is all deep, deep is uh mostly twenty-four seven operation, regardless of most personnel, and that is such that most adjacent to thirty six, third is the way in terms of elevation and location of the, of the adjacent structures. There in the end of this. Well, this, this is the last, this is the. And so the top of the, the top of string is parallel, the bottom is parallel to thirty six, towards up, you're parallel to the other, everything that we orient, you're in the same orientation of the site plan. Second floor and public, this is the main for uh for public functions, as the mayor mentioned, as he pointed out, the front stair, and you can go in the lower level to the T U section, and you can traverse up that stair to get to the courtroom and council chambers as well. Similarly, you can enter at grade uh this location, the only thing in the back portion of the building to get to the main building. So um courtroom, council chambers on top, our area here, this area here is the uh public space for any of the, any of the service rooms, all the services that you get now, if you're in the I G B, there's one location. So um you probably will be here, we'll show you what that looks like in uh rendering, the elevations, uh the, and probably could go back down. So predominantly, the area is for the public access this year, with our service rooms, court chambers, front building, then um upper left end where the building, where the building comes from, so we do have, we do, both floors of the building have at grade uh exits and entrances, which actually makes the building very, very safe, um because the site is two two years ago. And again, this is oriented to say that should be first floor, uh that isn't Dan, that is the complex work. Any any questions regarding this? Sure. Could you come out there, the availability of public spaces? Sure. Um the uh the court chamber is there, when we see a blue, we have the progress. The part for children, the problem of the building as well, um based on the administrative use of the facility, uh that Ken's devised, that the public can work, is it work out? The law that side, is that? No, that, probably everything behind that court, council chambers, with the exception of this area, which is the public area for service rooms, but probably everything in the lower the building, uh will be for the uh the, the program. And it'll be a lot. Clear? Yes. So if you don't wander around, do you ask to see where the uh, come to the third, you have five. You all want to, because it was still at the back of the, I get on the police station. I saw after hours, it'll be locked in certain places, so we can't put it up, uh just, that 's nineteen years ago. It's all like two or three, just the view like. When we get to the uh the redprints, um I'll, I'll, I'll get back there, I can see you. When we get to the, uh, the renderings, um, I'll, I'll, I'll get back to that, I think, if you need to see the.
Uh, Tom Tyler, Summer House, what is this, sit while you're working in the service room, uh, waiting area or something?
Right now, you just kind of sit out. Um, this is a fairly large, uh, fairly large car here, uh, the most likely will be some level of security area, um, prior to the service room.
You don't have to stand. That's the, what do you do when I say it? Or is it yes?
All of it. All of our operations. Yeah, that's, that's, what's in your brain first, uh, the new government, uh, is far off, since they're not. But, sorry, you said by, probably some person's wife? But all of government, not a government office, yes.
Right.
Get, uh, emergency nurse, you know, for, um, public works enough to, uh, work.
Okay, first, Rob Sherman, thirty-sixth, first day of squad, if you're not completed up there, came in, uh, you only have two vehicles, one of them is not four-by-four. Can you get the elements to be four-by-four, so it's gonna have to come from downtown? Fire. What's that?
You had a comment with the question, thirty-eight.
But, but the plan, in theory, in, in the modern side, is to start to move the work state out of the floodway and back to the public works garage, it's where the lot spaces. Right now, it's a garage, so it's inside, we didn't pull, you know, those.
We still need another four-by-four, that's what you want.
Okay.
I have, yes, the high school, there's emergency, the weather ban. So I only have one four-by-four, I have to stay on the hill from town. So there's emergency in the weather, so I, you know, you can treat it there. And then, you know, there. Anybody else?
Greg, what?
Hey, Greg, two points, basically, Greg, um, we'll get an electronic version up on the website of this, you know, I know it's all blurry and people might, might want to see it in more detail, but how about next day or so?
Is there any, anybody has a question on, when, when you're just here, uh, I'll try to get it off here? So, the little line on the board, if you can touch it off, this is in there as well, if you can touch it, somebody, and a lot of things.
Go to left.
You got it, that's it.
Right. Come on. Where, where?
Thank you.
Council papers.
So many guys from Little Town?
Um.
No, they still need a lot.
Can we go back? No, you can go, go. You go there, we won't be able to wander around, but when it's, if somebody wants to speak with you, or raise your speech with you, you'll be brought back there. From the point, you have the court office, over there, the county, you see where the, uh, construction zoning, the court clerk, it includes the council office, um, there'll be a close-off right there. Pink and red, that door, you know, somewhere, council, the council office.
Right on the middle of it.
You know that is right there?
And it's not, it's, uh, any, I'll ask, the office shouldn't be there.
You know, so once it's important, you're gonna have to, just a general question, a couple of waiting area, with a couple of waiting area, has there been any thought given, maybe I'm talking about anything that, um, you know, it's like, maybe like, uh, so, uh, Pearl Hall has that done work, um. Instead of flying, uh, seeing the flying trucks and stuff, it's a kind of, yeah, so you have a medical emergency department in contact, um, I mean, it's been to Atlanta, finally, and, and new useful building. Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. Yeah, so good. Yeah, a lot of times, that can be done. Yeah, that's your architect, really, that's what I'm saying, it's up to the, okay, electrical and, you know, I would. But the special allowance, something like that. The corner.
Hello, everybody good? Yeah, please. Alright, so, uh, this is the, this is the initial, uh, intent for the, uh, consulting, uh, with, uh, the thirty-sixth, uh, south. It's directed, uh, in, uh, here, but, uh, you'll enjoy it. Uh, this is the, the mayor's apartment, this is the, uh, the sign, you'll see two very, uh, recognized elements on each side of the park, um, and, and, uh, it's kind of filled with, uh, they wanted to talk about how you generate that, uh, that sound okay? So, we talked about two elevations on this side, this is the ingress and egress location of, uh, thirty-sixth, so south now, um, this is the lower level apartment, this is the police department access, that, the front door on the lower level, there's the P D access. Yeah, the ride door to the right-hand side, the salary board access, and if you see the P D bar in front of that, um, when you go up this, uh, when you go around here, you will traverse, uh, up to the second level, uh, where you see the car in the apartment. Probably that, uh, about that elevation, it won't, uh, just to give you an idea of what the, some of the, some height of, or get back to the, the picture, um, this is a, this is condensed. Picture's better, because going further than that, car to get around, you'll be able to, uh, you'll see, you know, and be able to, you know, and, you know, and. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna leave, we're gonna leave, we're gonna have two, uh, renderings like this that will be, uh, the people to investigate if you're on the, if you're, uh, so, just to give you, uh, and so, so, in that side, uh, from right here, um, to the underside of that, uh, of the first, uh, flat roof. Uh, it's about, uh, twenty-five, twenty-five feet, uh, or so, up to the bridge is, um, about thirty-seven, about thirty-five. Um, it's two stories, the building is three stories, um, again, first floor is accessible at grade here, second story, the rear building is accessible at grade as well. Um, the makeup of the, uh, materials, this is an occasional, that the painting wall will turn the corner, it's from the building wall, and show the other elevations will turn back around, and turn back into your painting wall. That was painting wall, two-three side pass concrete, it's planted with a perfect, with a, uh, twenty-four inch wall, uh, concrete bricks, it's a very long brick, uh, bands that you see on there, on the blades block, uh, the actual color of the roof. Uh, so, our, our fifth year was to come and pick the, hit the site and pick the two levels of the site, and integrate, uh, the change in elevation of the site that we have at, at the end of it. And make this building hard to sight, not just, this way you can just sit on the site, it can paint the body. So it's very important for us to pick the painting wall element, and take the flange of the wall, and brick on that wall, and turn it right into a wall, the building, and we'll see the other elevations, and they'll turn back into the painting wall, and then it gets on the other side. So, second floor, uh, is, uh, is metal panels, uh, and the, uh, the roof is a stainless steel, uh, panel, the metal panel. Windows are, uh, are, uh, file open, you can open the windows, um, all the windows on the lower level with regard to P D, uh, have a level three bullet resistance, so one of you will be, keep on these, well, the same, uh, but they still get a, still get a, uh, complex, so, um. So that, that's important, that, the salary board is required, you have to, uh, think of glass, where you can't be able to see the salary board, we're still wanting to provide some, uh, light design, and it's only two them, or, uh, correction, uh. There, any, uh, talk on, uh, the, uh, what? I've got a bridge, old island's bridge, that wouldn't be, be a part, I request these two buildings, down the road, not, uh, gonna be, uh, most of the time, I don't think it'll come down to. We're, uh, hospitality state, I guess, you know, but I think that'll, you know, we hope that'll let nice, uh, there's a, uh, a lot of poking around the top, um, if we could, uh, make that one, uh. If it's an older.
Questions? Hi, um, can I ask, are, are those the train, um, little, are they helping, seeing sort of the sidelines, like the spot, or do, is it?
On the, on the top, um, on the, on the transfer street, um, they are, um, the panel panels, so it feels that, that the light will go, uh, through, it is, it is a, it's still inside the public area on the second floor, um, so, um, that will, that will get mine in. Can't see out, uh, but your, your products on panel, there's a transition panel, that's integral to the activity.
That's supposed to are along the, the ridge, uh?
The transfer, uh, when I, when I get you to another render, we're gonna talk about the other portion of it, that's, again, open, uh, open, um, processing room, that's.
Are we doing this pretty much?
So, so, uh, just, uh, the building won't be, uh, sustainably, uh, there are, there are no panels on the, uh.
Uh, go next to the box.
This is the bottom row?
What, what's the last one on the doors?
What?
Are they level three also?
If anything, anything, uh, we'll have.
And also the two, uh, television, they have eight now, or. Last system, no one, um, or?
Right, so I see, it's not, I want to be clear, it's not, uh, it's just, uh, level three, um, with the, you know, where you're, uh, that is, the, the public pressure does not require, especially, uh, any, any code resistance, it's very big. I think it's good planning, as it's brought up to you, you also, um, so we, will you want to, as much as the, as much as the budget prediction right now, this best probably, uh, any, any more, please, this, uh, not a good.
Okay, the words. You said you have papers.
They're, they're just, they're already in.
No, no, they, they come out, we have to.
Look, you don't know that we're gonna do that, it's actually, it's actually tinted glass, and, uh, although we can, we're, uh, your public pressure requires that you can't see, so once you bring, uh, the, uh, police party, or the mayor can't, you're not, you're, uh, you're, uh.
It's like two shades of color right here.
Sure, uh, looks, uh. When you see the blue, no, it's, it's, it's intended to be blue, raised block, it's in paint wall and base wall, that's the blue colored, uh, uh, the blue, the gold, same politics, that, that, is a little bit.
I think, I think we're getting white from the high screen.
I'll say, you're. We, we have a, uh, high school, uh, I mean, the question.
As a pedestrian, if I walk in, uh, thirty-sixth, or am I able to walk in, uh, through the police department and go up to the second floor?
Absolutely.
Um, is there an elevator?
Yes.
Okay. Is, is there a way in, correct, with, just a little, um, parking area on Miller Street, is that closed off on Miller Street, or if you have walked in from Miller Street and come in?
No, no, when we go to the other venue, we're, we're, um, pedestrian access, so I'm, I'm, it's up to you, pedestrian access to the P D level right here, off, uh, thirty-sixth, you have, uh, P D entrance. As the mayor mentioned, there's a sticker, and we won't be able to call the elevator, to get you up to the public, uh, I don't think, uh, court council chambers, and, uh, public services.
Right, but could I walk further up Miller Street and then come in to the car, do I, or, okay?
Like, get to the other venue, and I'll.
Gotcha, thank you.
John? So is this project come with a generator back? Back of the building?
There, there, uh, fans, there, there's no, um, were generated to be booked in, we're still, uh, second done yet, uh, repeat your initial render for us. Let me see that. Got it, on the war.
Again, the option, thirty-sixth, the generators available, maybe it can be planned, it's still getting hot, support gathered there, is it a log out? I mean, that.
I think, we have, we have to have a generator to the police department, so, it will be in progress.
Al, also, uh, what's that hurricane? This is a, um, this is a critical, uh, show, uh, it's, uh, the, uh, the, uh, while, uh, this building requires, uh, the, uh, to the exception of, uh, the, uh, of course, uh, this is, uh, this doesn't, it's a double print, uh, it has that kind of, uh, skipping, with regard to the windows, uh, we get, the windows are required to be, uh, small, this is, um, same as any windows that are on, on. But it has to be designed, uh, with a critical facility, uh, structurally.
So, what's your answer?
Two or three? Can answer, you're just, uh.
Yeah, the hurricane, this month.
Alright, uh, next up, so this is, uh, each floor is here going up, thirty-sixth, we're balanced, yes, still early, the elevation, uh, at the same level, uh, just going in the other direction, we'll see that that, uh, that, that wall doesn't really, uh, long, that, uh, building, and it continues, it's kind of, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the building, uh, but it's, uh, it's similar as, uh, the, uh, the, uh. You do see, you'll see that, uh, panel or panel, which is less light, big slide, at this, uh, at this level, the, the roof is opened up, uh, you have, uh, mechanical equipment on roof, so you know, this way you don't see the mechanical, it does need to be, uh, open air, so that gets some fresh air from the building, so we have a crew when you stop there, uh, we've done that, to keep it, to give the, uh, side elements, because it's not, not allowing them to, uh, anyone on the ground. So, those are the elements that you see there, uh, lower off the brick, the food panel is, is length block, and actually, uh, you, um, the middle of it, so, metal, and then, you see, uh, you see.
Of course, you set that, sidewalk, uh, to the.
From the sidewalk, this will be the side.
Yeah, there's a, uh.
Yeah, look, I don't.
It was seen, whatever, they were.
I don't, I don't have, I don't have that information for you, uh.
That's my house, you know what, I'm gonna go.
Just a few, right?
Uh, next one. Okay. Wait for the trail of the. This one. Anybody else?
I have a question, so thirty-sixth is a very holy traffic, because it's probably some summertime, and sometimes you would be, uh, you know, we talk to people, is there any kind of, anywhere that can just pass off, like, the, the building?
Uh, this is Jeff's, uh.
And I don't know what they're called, uh, we just, uh, yeah, like, all.
Right, so, can you, can you, there's some, uh, 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 uh.
Which is like a crazy, you know, it's, you know, you have my crazy, they have all, uh, uh.
It wouldn't appear that there's a, the front, where you're, you're.
So we can go back to the site plan, what we've done with the render, we can have it go back to site seven and make your impression, but, I think your impressions are more happen to be, uh, to be, uh, the site plan, uh, I don't know, if you want, uh, service. So, we can go back to site fact, when we're done with the renders, we can have us go back to site seven and make your impression, but, I think your question is, uh, more happened to the end, because this is the, uh, the site plan, uh, I, I, uh, I, uh, service. Uh, Steve, uh, okay, I know what, about place, you know, that residents for the lower part, walking up to the top, uh, you, 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 cross, uh, flashing lights or some kind of safety, uh, you're not very, it's, it's out there, it's, uh, you get a cross safety, and the war and, um, coming, uh, uh, you can sort it down.
It's working on the ground.
Here's the, uh, thank you.
Be careful, like, yeah, nah.
Look, you're gonna have, people crossing, you know, you're gonna be, uh, you get, uh, uh. Anything else? And, uh, this is the, uh, if you, uh, after public, public side of the building, you can see there's, uh, there's a main, you can see that, uh, uh, public ingress, uh, you can walk up those steps, get comfortable, there's a, this ceremony, you, uh, need a ramp, and this is still, that assembly, left hand side, you see a two-point ramp, um, you have, uh, that, uh, platform, and everything for building that. Um, this side, uh, it's got, over that P D entrance, and then this is a very important, uh, renovation on the public side. Question, guys?
Yeah, where, where's the, um, handicap parking in relation to the ramp start?
You, you like the site?
Well, yeah, when I'm, when I'm looking at having care for people with, in wheelchairs and with walkers and stuff, um, if you put a handicap parking here where the ramp starts, and not pathway across the parking lot, or a handicap ramp that somebody has to walk, maneuver with, with a walker or whatever, a far distance, so that's my concern, so that's where they can come in. But where is the ramp? The ramp starts way down, where is the ramp to start? So, so you've got the handicap parking there, but then they have to go all the way down to the end to get to the ramp?
Well, I think that could be just a detail, because at the time, they're gonna put parking lines, you can just change where, that's not fit.
Well, well, that's, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah.
That's why I'm bringing it up, because these are the plans, so I'd like to see the goal and the plan, to actually, uh, have a thought to, that's where we should cite the handicap parking closer to where the start of the ramp is.
It also looks like there's one down, look at the bottom, that you can always take the elevator up to the second floor, if anything's still in there too.
Right, but when you're dealing with someone with a handicap, I, it's much, right?
I went in a wheelchair, I've been out.
So, that's why I'm looking at that, and not for nothing, a lot of us are head over, so that's why I have a question again. I, I would just like to see it be thought of.
It's an excellent point, I didn't bring it up, um, you can have, you do have barriers, spaces, uh, you know, barriers, spaces, or you can log, or you can park, you have the adjacent public for access on, so there should be species that you see that were striped in yellow, you can look for the barrier spaces, while, issue that hasn't been set yet, aggression shortly will set it, so that they're both adjacent to barriers, and aggressive.
Yeah, that's what I'm just, you know, figuring that part out.
So, by looking at the plans, the lower corner of the building is on one side, and, uh, quiet's on the other side, but this is the ground level, on the top side, so it's really not expected to fall on this side. Okay, so all that glass, we, we, uh, even, uh, is that all the last, that last half here?
This over here, I mean?
Yeah.
Yes, glad, oh, we do have another, we do have a last render, uh, C W.
And, uh, and they're cheltenham, all the, um, and it'd be.
All the, all the.
Yeah, and you come back to me, with, uh, you, uh, some type of, for, just block, break in, sure, anything that kinds of, um, um, on the other side of that building, right?
So, uh, all the windows have, uh, all the low E, um, low E blazing, uh, which, uh, reduce, uh, including rope, uh, but, uh, uh, any, any glass that's, uh, created, uh, for, is the, uh, temper glass, uh, in this case, it'd be temper laminated, uh, temper laminated glass is similar to the glass from the Department of Provincial, uh, it, it, when, when rates, uh, when you, you get saved once, uh, so, so none of this glass is, uh, is called plate glass, which are definitely branded with, uh, large shards, and, uh, dangerous, but, uh, is, uh, temper bonded, and, and one of the low E. That's some life, some problems. So, this is the, this is the last line, uh, so you're, that's all, this is from Miller, that's the ingress, standress for Miller, we, this, uh, the, uh, car, uh, and this is that maintain wall, from the background, which, uh, there are two levels, uh, of, uh, public level, and then below, uh, P D access, thirty-sixth, the intent of the borough is to, um, take the activities that are on done, uh, that, uh, close to thirty-sixth, to impact, uh, in case of residence.
Okay. It's on the middle.
Uh, this is, uh, this is the ingress, and, uh, uh, both, 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 uh, both ingress. Somebody else have a question on, on this? We're, I'm pretty much, I was, I believe, uh, you can say.
Okay, I'm always a pro, kind of, of work, there's some of the projects that we, uh, over, as you all use, some of the projects that we, that, uh, have, that, you can probably see, um, initially, I've, uh, the street, uh, program now, um, I'm holding contractors, uh, powerful, for, uh, we, we, we're holding the road. Matter of fact, uh, Friday, they're gonna be coming back, or somebody, they go back to, uh, shorter drive, they have on there, they've got a base day at the, uh, 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 and we do the final day there, that's just some of the stuff that they, they agree to do, and they get, uh, 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 main up on Portland Road, so we got them to pay, head that road, and we did the other half, the shared service, the county, so, all, all the roads, now, Dave, but, not other parts for us. But means we've got a much better price, uh, as a service, you can, uh, we had it done quicker, you know, you know, you have, uh, some, uh, name, uh, yes, company, uh, share, I always love the same on fourth and, uh. Yeah, fourth and fifth street is pretty much the same thing, they were just a lot of services on that road, um, so, after talking with the gas company, and I spoke, and I said, I've, got away with a lot for a long time, but, it's up now, so, yeah, paid in full with, uh, fourth and fifth street, I've delivered so many openings, so they agreed to do that, along with the end, but, uh, Cedar, they kind of, uh, uh, they also did South Street, they were, uh, uh, making that was on down South Street, too, and Shore Drive was kind of like a gimme, they were kind of, uh, accountable, but, I guess, they did a meeting for the new combo down the end of Shore Drive, and, uh, did a ride around with the, uh, uh, as, uh, agreed to do at the road, so that's why I got, um, and I guess, the shared services from county, the other half of Portland Road, was good for us, and, uh, we didn't have to go out to bed, it's kind of a contract that we, uh, um, in the recycling yard, we located some dumpsters, um, pass, or, made a lot of bulk into thirty-yard dumpster, once I saw, we had to call and get it done, ask for it to get it done, uh, now, we no longer pick up the garbage on Bay Avenue, the contract, uh, was already actually written to the, uh, spec anyway, actually the new specs now, but I have to pick up all the, all the garbage on Bay Avenue, we will grab it once in a while, it's overflowing, we'll notice it, uh, but we.
I don't have set out, so, not, you, the contractor picks here, the people's garbage, but, uh, 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 contractor now, say, here, uh, one.
Right, and in the parts, um, so, like I was saying, one of the businesses that we did have, was getting all the bulk, uh, now, we have the garbage truck, we do own, and we put all the bulk in that, to where we're only dumping it maybe, once every three months, because now we're compacting all the bulk into a thirty-two yard box, instead of dumping it every two weeks, or whatever it is.
Well, so, dump, maybe you used to go, uh, uh, uh.
Right, um.
Is it leaving the copper?
Oh, yeah, we took, uh, we took all the copper, out of all the buildings, actually, I do a demo room, uh, we did a, uh, uh, Convent, brick shop, and the old Borough Hall, um, we got a lot of the copper out there, um, cashed, or, twenty, uh, uh, um, before we, uh, and while we were demoing, and painted, we couldn't pull out the guys on the ground, we grabbed it, um, yeah, uh, all the twenty-yard dumpster.
Excuse me, I have a question, it's my understanding that at one point, the demolition of the Borough Hall was sent out for bid, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, the proposal's in court. Okay. Can you disclose what the cost savings was between perhaps your lowest bid that was submitted to the roster?
The one, uh, one sixty-one, uh, was over a hundred thousand dollars, we demolished, the entire project was.
Hmm.
We, you know, up three quarters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I, I, I'm, I'm, uh, because, uh, it's horrible, contract, uh, I haven't, come in, uh, I'm, uh, straight up, man, that was a great move to do, yeah, actually, for me, I had to walk, uh, guys in the land, I don't know, I live, officially, uh, you know, I feel the pain, uh, I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, um, so the, the twenty-yard dumpster, the, uh, the twenty-yard dumpster, um, before, we were kind of just filling that, uh, the borough actually bought that dumpster, and we owned it, um, and they would come and take the metal, and we would get nothing for it, they would just cash it in, and it'd call it even for taking the dumpster, now, we actually pay the county's roadwalk to come, take that dumpster, like, take it for like, hundred and twenty-five dollars, they call us, they, they charge us to come take it, they'll, they'll, they'll bring it anywhere we want to cash in the metal, and recently, I mean, not much, but it's something, we were pretty much steadily getting about three hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars back, from cashing the metal, so, it's, it's not much, but it's something, instead of, of no cost.
Yeah, more than a wall, or?
Yeah, yeah, a wall, um, demolition buildings, everybody saw that, obviously, we had, um, strategically planned that very well, to take the last wall down, Bay Avenue, so nobody still make comment, uh, no, it's, the way we did it, we had to do it in that way, it was very close to the other houses, um, Charlie, obviously, his house is pretty close there, and I only dropped two bricks on there, so, um, but, yeah, that's down now, so, hopefully, it will forward, got a part of that there, whatever, yeah, um, a lot of vehicles, set up with an auction company to, um, get rid of some of the older vehicles that are, only usable, didn't work, busted out, when we junk, um, we got about, yeah, forty thousand dollars, I think, back from vehicles that we auctioned off, and various equipment that we auctioned off.
And in doing all this, I have to say, that part of everything is better than I think it ever has been, my, like, uh, you know, so, very nice and neat.
We, 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 we cleaned it up, there was a lot of borders sitting there, so we, so when, when they did Portland Road, I'm not talking, but, when they did Portland Road, we had them bring the buildings down to the, the Borough Yard, so we can level everything out and grade it, we also did the recycling yard, so, anybody put, uh, um, so now, the water doesn't kind of sit in there, and it kind of just drains all, goes out to the, sorry, um.
Most of the, access, material, problem is the house.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Foundation.
Up on the top, yep.
On the, on the, uh.
Yeah, um, in doing the road opening, um, the new road opening ordinance, the fee before was, uh, fifty dollars, now wasn't, existed with anybody around us, and any municipality around us, so we looked around our neighborhood, and, uh, see what that was, now, we're actually making a hundred and ninety dollars on each road opening, it's pretty much the same as every other municipality, um, for road openings, so, every time there's a service done for gas company, water company, whatever it is, a hundred and nine dollars every time, so. Snug Harbor Bulkhead, uh, flat valve, so, when we first came here, one of the first things, mayor said, was, we'll fix that flat valve, so I went out there, I looked at it, this thing is huge, it's metal, and I don't know how we're gonna get it off, so, we wound up taking it off, and fabricated it, it's not anything permanent, but, it's, it, it wasn't even working, it was hanging out by one more, now, it actually opens and closes and swings, um, we patched up some of the wall the best we can, we just said it's not perfect, but, I could say that it's definitely a lot better than it was, even if the, the ways the tide from coming in now, it's something to help, um, also, with that, we are, um, on demo right now, we're two checkouts in on recreation, and cheerful, for the, uh, pipes that come in the snow, there's two checkouts in there from, uh, a company that, uh, wasn't down for about four months, just to see if they work, um, they wanted us to buy them, but, we said, no, we're not gonna buy them until I know they actually work, and the only way we're gonna know they work is if the tide's all the way up and it rains, so, that's what, kind of, we need for. Yeah, it's, so far, we haven't had any complaints, and I haven't seen, yeah, problems, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. The company is kind of getting a little bit bigger now in Jersey, they did a lot of work in Breakdown, um, they did a lot of work in, a lot of the shore towns, uh, a lot in Florida, so, uh, C and B actually talked to us.
More person?
Yeah.
A person.
Even multi-reversing, a lot of those are seventy-five percent, that was a grant that they.
Um, so we also, we did some drainage work up on Two Lights, um, this, before I came, the contractor did some work up there on Two Lights, and it's closing a little bit of erosion, and washing out some people's property, so, uh, what we did was, we extended the pipe a little bit further, and put in a, you know, swell, and then, with riprap and everything, and backed it, let everything alone, without, just to extend the pipe, to alleviate some of the erosion that was going on up there, and, uh, what we haven't made, made sense, so I think we're, I think that was thanks. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, you need, they still hold. Probably need to drain.
Yeah.
The only one drain.
Only one basin, man.
Only the pipe is totally being washed out, you can, uh, you can, uh, you can job on that.
Thank you, um, we repaired basin on K U Street, that was pretty bad shape, um.
That wasn't right behind, uh, was, uh, uh.
Yeah, right behind, uh, 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 um, yeah, we did, now, now the basin.
That's what the, that's what you actually do, you, they, they, new market, are we gonna repair, we don't call time, and then you want, we're able to do it, if you need, uh, whether you're just preparing, or completely rebuilding, they, they, they.
We're set up a little bit better, you can do a lot, but, um, raised some sewer man holes down South Bay, uh, lycot basins at the Clint Plan, so the Clint Plan, the, the basins that were over there, there was bluestone right up to the edge of the basins, and it was constantly bluestone falling into the basin, so, we kind of put a three-foot perimeter around the basin, so, stone can't get in there anymore, and it kind of keeps it back.
That's the corner of Fifth and Cedar, and I don't, uh, uh, place of the lot, you know, we sold it there, so we, we, we did that, uh, that corner, we had, we drained it quite through, uh, the driveway, uh, which is up the bases, checked out, and, it's, it's been, I don't know, five, and, um, there are a few more, uh, Peter, Down Street job, that was just fun, the pipe from that corner, all the back around the street, go higher, and just look at it, and, 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 I saved a lot of dollars.
Repaired basins, so, same old, just, uh, repair basin, um, clean a lot of the clogged basins up on Portland Road, um, a lot up near the park there, uh, have to do some basin inspections, there was a lot, um, that were clogged, some down, so we looked at it, um, and we had the county come in, obviously, they have the sewer jet, and they come in, and they'll jet out the pipes, and you have to prove the drainage.
I'll share, share this project, uh, speed up a lot.
Yeah.
A lot of money.
Yes.
Big one, uh, you know, they don't have, ask you after, you know, you pay, you know.
Um, so there's a sidewalk, we just actually did the other day, um, there was a raised sidewalk, about four inches width, upon it, in, uh, Best Park, and we, we did that sidewalk, and now it's flat, nobody will trip over it, uh, pretty much from Dollar Tree to Best Park, before, I know that, uh, I think a contractor was coming in to do a spring cleanup. Um we don't have any contractors come in, who could do all the cleanups and all the parts. Nobody came to help us at all. So that was pretty much bad.
It's a wonderful play down there, however, there is zero shade, I would just try to go through with my management who really subscribes, he couldn't, there's one manager that I can see, and I didn't see, but they're really, they're all summer, and it's not really useful because there's no shade, and so I, it's a shame, it's such a great part. So I just, I just, I just.
So filings over here, probably the community center, but kinda designated a little parking area, dressed things up a little bit. Pretty much the whole area. Here, here. Yeah.
Island, island, island. I saw the guy standing there, he didn't believe in the file, he said, you have all the cops you want. Hold them, uh kids, uh baby, they should come from down, so I could find a lot of, run down, all tiazza. You get some, you know, some big road, I guess that, uh, brand, start the road, and it's how we. And it looks nice, right, well.
I thought he wanted me to burn the. I really, I thought he wanted me to burn the families for firewood, I realized very good. Yeah, we did a lot, yeah. But it kinda became like a thing now, we'd be everywhere, we'd do, finally did it, look still, the road.
Um.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just wanna point, I always feel just that, just that great, and that are out here. Um.
Yeah, yeah, Land Black Association, um Clint Planes, park is not over there. Here. Oh, we put removal one down at Miller, Miller Beach we did, so.
Uh.
Yeah, just so we can get onto the beach, same thing here, the vehicles can't get off of the, one of the mills is actually removal pole, so the guy can, um so the guy can sweep beach.
You have a problem with that part, so you're gonna do that, because you're removal pole down at uh, moving the beach so you can cut through it plus, the other corner of the bay, and so. Those gave the. Um the other thing is, if you know, I don't know, we paid, we paint, we paint apartments, lots of refusion of where the tent blocks, uh both the driveway or the cheese and all of that, it was the only thing that made it go out, and that's what we did. Just to continue to happen with the works like that.
Um but electrical panel over at the uh Best Park, actually the electrical panel, it's all compliance, obviously they had to get to a meter somehow, so there's a very extensive project that we had to build over there, just so we could reach the meter.
That's a, that's a house without a major, that's a contract.
Um. Kaboo D Field, we went up there, realized that there was a memorial that I had no idea. And we kinda cleaned that up, we mulched everything, all the mulching was done in the impound, again this year. Um so we played that Kaboo D Field. It's Middletown property, but.
Needed for the Highlands, though.
Oh, okay, so you have to take care of this.
Our, our son's play, our brother Hudson's team's play on that field, it's always played on that field. Even though it's actually Middletown property, it's tied over to the field for.
Can we get somebody to?
Well, we don't want to be that practice, you know?
Property, you know, by the. Down back to my mom.
Um um we reinstalled the memorial at Frank Hall Park. Um that was, I guess, missing for quite some time, so she actually retrieved the flag for us. Um and we, we've got that back up on the rock there, painted it up, made a little mulch around it, and the bench there, so people will. Um fixed the flag pole at Deloitte, the flag was missing for a while, um it's a pulley up on the top. We actually, or in service thing, pole snack, uh where we can use their equipment, we can use theirs, they can use ours. Um and they have an actual golden truck, bucket trucks, so we were able to get out there and um fix that. Um the association lot, we graded that off, um so filings over there, we set up. Um the triangle near John Street, a little triangle, there's leftover rock, and we did around the community center here, kinda dressed this up and eliminated all the weeds that was growing on here, along the holding mat. So we had some extra rocks, or like, you know, some stuff over there, so we throw it around all the trees over at John Street. And it pruned everything up, so it'll pick it up a little bit, so I guess the rest is up there. Um. Miller Beach, uh we did, we did a pretty decent amount of that, we put some sleds in, uh for porta potties, for bike racks. Um we painted the entire thing. Um the whole cathedral that was over there, it was green, I think before, and we decided to change the color to blue, obviously it's a town color, it was blue, so we decided, let's go with blue. Um we regraded the beach before season, make sure that it wasn't all jacked up. Um. But we did a sidewalk, made it accessible now. Uh handicap park is now on the street, they can come right up to sidewalk and enter into the beach. We got a ramp that we built where it's a slab, so they go right up to the beach. Make sure we'll probably look at it. Get out on the beach a little bit earlier. Yeah. Um Clint Planes Park and Lot, we added some stone there and graded that stuff out. Um sold it, maybe a half, started the community center. Um painted curves, so after Valley Street was all done, uh we still have a lot more to do, we're painting curves. Um but we're slowly moving our way down, we started in zone one uh late last year, and we've been a little bit this year. Um but we're, we're getting back, we did Valley Street, so that was coming out, painting it up. Just to make it look nice, and we had the striker come in and strike all the parking down on Fourth and Fifth Street, so everything's designated parking now. So went pretty good.
And you've done this with how many guys?
Uh we have four guys.
You and four guys?
Me and four, yeah. The guys are good, they really, they, they take a lot of pride. They, they really do, even into the parks, you know, as far as just cutting grass, or we're just kinda mowing grass down. But now it's like, all right, listen, we gotta edge it, we're the weed whacker, let's make it look nice, let's not just mow, you know, and it takes a lot of pride right now.
They even started to point out, like, that was a.
That was good, we had a good pro.
Uh that's it on D W, and that was basically it. Thank you.
I just wanted to say something to Dave. I wanna thank you, I've been in town a little bit over two years, and I see a dramatic difference from the time I moved in until, until now, I do wanna thank you.
Uh thanks for staying here, I'll take a picture, you guys have a lot going on, and everything looks really positive. Um my team is calling, uh by the borough, um I did, you're in the situation, all base side drive. Uh we got this drive up there, and it's not heavily used early right now, uh it's over by Seashore Park, it's a little bit uh that way. And if easily you might went out there and see that, we had some soil pollution that was coming down the slopes in a particular area. So our team did some, like, our survey uh of the slopes, and as you can see, these contours, these little lines, are basically done foot. So it's an extremely steep, steep area, and we're in the process of, I don't know, in our design, as you see here, this is a washout, which uh basically what occurred, that the water came down, pushed it all, slowed it down. This sort of came from a system large tree that failed, or had been exposed to previous coral hole. Um so we set up our geosat team, did some soil sampling, now we're proposing to add some, if you go to the next one, we're gonna be basically building back the slope, uh where it has the avion ball, which is uh chicken wire, three by three, just limestone, some juvanning, and we're proposing to add vegetation. Uh the way that these slopes stay strong and stable is to have pretty solid vegetation that grows fast and is maintained by the natural elements. So by using a steep slope, steep ex, as well as using uh A D S, A D S uh flat drilling, one by twelve inch, sorry, we have two actual. Uh they're popular with like dirt fields and such, you combine the water, so that it's kinda taking a soil away. So the idea is to have five tanks, sorry, together, coming down, it'll be coming down to the high, it's the, uh, eventually it's an existing concrete channel here that will go down base side. So the goal is to allow the water and herboid come down safely, not disturb the soil, and then make its way into uh the natural, the already existing concrete channel. Um so the goal right now, if you've been up there, it's extremely thick vegetation, we do not have a fall season there. So we're not advised to have destruction activity there, and sell some vegetation, die off. That'll make it cheaper, uh you know, and here, there, thanks, to Shetty's, whatever, to the. That's the goal, that's the solution.
What was that property in, what is that?
Uh the cost is still being determined, our goals have gone, it's gonna go out, not the goals to keep it balanced, or somewhere between twenty to forty range, it's hard to tell based on how high it's. Possibly, again, we're still finalizing our requirement, and it's gonna come in, and what we can do is once we have a set of our pricing, we can figure out what we need to reduce on projects, because the goal is to have a cheap solution, but also that creates a state of balance. Um something like this is going on less around with, and uh your other question is? Uh you go back to the. As far as I'm concerned, just go back at the, and another slide, I'm, now it's just the existence. When you have a total slope like this, the line of right plane, of the tax道line, I don't know, it's kind of halfway up the slope. So like, I believe, was it east point is up top, I don't believe that they own that, just hopefully you can get right away and get it signed around. So we got all of this.
Um Sachi, you may wanna check that, the research I've done, I'm not sure if this is accurate, but some of that hill is privately moved on that side of the base side.
Further up, it goes up, goes up now like a hundred.
No, further down.
Oh, further down.
Towards Marine, this way, on the back.
Oh, yeah, this is that part down.
Wait.
Yeah.
Crazy enough, there was a for sale sign on that, I'll, I'll talk about mine, it was a for sale sign on that property about ten years ago. I'm, I'm sure you checked it, but you may just wanna do a check.
Yeah, we'll.
Yeah.
Avoid this.
It is purely, as when you go out there, uh shut like, put off, basically, you have a situation where you're like, heavy rain, now we have problems. Uh you'll have water, especially if you have trees and vegetation, they're, they're, they're growing to this, this slope, but the vegetation has to be tied off. Uh that is twenty, thirty years old, and you can see it, you drive up, you'll see, the station is gone, where you see it, that, basically, we got to come back. People thought previously, stabilize them, and you have one of these massive trees come down, you know, it's like the golden car. It's like, you have all the roots coming out, and now it's destabilized, it's gonna get hurt, and it's gonna do some damage. Basically, there's a lot of water, like, that's, so our project is not, I'm trying to maintain this, just like we heard, I'm trying not to.
You really can't see it, you're not gonna be able to see it, the vegetation's not there. Cody's. It's actually Cody's secret home, I call it, I call it Cody's.
It's not clear on this, but there's houses that are, like, rost, still slides. Yeah.
Cause it's still scoring up here?
Yeah, yeah. But the word, don't get that word.
Goal is to get the water, to where it needs to be, and sort of hold the length of, so that we can offer vegetation, operate this one back. And the soil. You got the right?
That's, that's all I got. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Is there any relationship for any capital projects with six and a half million dollars of bonds? Is there any relationship between any of the capital projects and six and a half million dollars of bonds? Talking about.
Okay, yeah.
There's a bond notice on the website, six and a half million dollars of bonds? What's the relationship going back in all these capital projects?
A lot of the older projects that they loan over to D W, we're, we're talking about, were the cash projects, projects. Um the past two years that I've been here, the borough has self-funded a lot of value for the projects, the over cash projects as well. See, the van that they're being sold, are older projects that were on the books, um actually, they're kind of sold out, like, multi-million dollars worth, we said, loans down, I remember, you remember, right? Um because we're just paying interest on pockets that weren't getting them, um so the van, and what you know, every year, you're gonna borrow, you're gonna borrow, borrow, and borrow, and borrow, and until you find, do a find today.
Is there a taxing piece, finances?
Everything that you see here, now each, it's like, you know, the waterway's gone, you're already within, you've already, that's part of the van that we're giving now. The, I guess, you got it. Um the only thing that we're gonna have to talk about in the future, um going out additionally for, which isn't created, is any additional final number coming to the coral hole.
Okay, so the coral holes.
Yeah. And I'm still working with team and engineering, I am as well with that, they haven't come to a final number for that, or like.
I wish I was a worker, we're talking about the rural, you have a price there for the coral?
No.
Where's, where's the money gonna come from?
Okay, right, so um we're estimating, we, we're beginning with a range of like, let's say, between five and seventy million, that's gonna come then. Um it goes per square foot, and then you have the uh the ground board, the outside ones that have to leave them, that has to go out for a final process for that, right? Because after you sit down, and the administrative office, the department of corrections, everyone, you think what you're, what you have to do worldwide, you know, you say, okay, I want this pretty building, that fifteen thousand square feet, now you have to figure out what has to go besides that building, and now we have to go back out for a process and get the final number, and that's what we're here for. Funding wise, uh it would be, it would be funded by the town, right, it would be converted and, or more. Uh and then with also, we're applying towards that, it's good, I want to be a fourth team that we would get, uh some part teams in. We're, they're still uh evaluating the C, so we're getting the money from one seventy one day, which was substantially damaged, and now we're having, they're having to go with codes and standards and those costs, they will already have proof. So codes and standards for the new building, like, let's say, the points department, let's say, um their park had a certain amount of square footage, well, back from the original building, we built, that wasn't required, nowadays, the codes and standards say, you know, says, okay, this is the work quality, we're doing this larger, bigger, better, more security, so we're gonna keep the next of funding for that, so that would be ninety percent.
So we're expecting, you guys gonna pay for the whole?
Not the whole town hall, no, absolutely not, no.
Their numbers base, that basically are, what we have upgrades to replace our. Their numbers base, that basically are what we have upgrades to replace our students.
So when someone will determine how much it costs to place the old town that, that's what they would be more presentable with. But. Then some.
So if they're going to round out the number, let's say, he has already said two million dollars, who goes there to renew from a hole? Right, um, and then I think there's like forty, twenty thousand dollars, like that's in your category D, like the, the gray paint on stuff, the clean up from the town, that the goal is to add and grow. So you're going to add that money in, plus the closing standard. Right, so within the next few months, I would imagine that you have tighter, um, numbers coming out, he has been coming out, any area I've been coming out, we, you guys work with that actually.
So of course. Well, I must guess. Uh, yes, yes.
Uh, I'm. He's a master, he's a, I'm, I'm going to copy the river hall, my. Yeah, and then we're also having you at a party, great, some help you get, you can talk to it on the web.
Christopher.
Yeah. I have to admit, I'm disappointed with a lot of specificity on the course. I just don't understand how, from a project, from a project point of view, how we don't have a target net, net. Net fee level, net, uh, whatever category you have, some estimates, I know we have estimates. And I know.
If the number lies in set, it's between five and seven million. Yeah, but that's what it is, if you're.
And you don't have five or thirty million is net of fee level? So you, it's a nine hundred million dollar. Yeah, that's what you, that's what I think you said, I'm trying to clarify. So building is like. Dean is going to reduce that cost to us by two.
At a rate.
Two point three, a little bit, all right, you pay for. Uh, the, or fifty for the O of the H, that on top of the building?
That was the bomb that you guys have already taken, a glory of mine.
So, but that's on top of the building. All right, so, and then the uh, demolition of the O of the H, demolition of, uh, so that's what we have, two hundred.
That wasn't any bomb.
That was, but that's a cost.
Correct.
So we're up to. What, a minor league on the building?
I, I, I can't, no.
It's, the five and seven is for the building.
Buildings.
What, for, I don't know, the, I choose the companies that are over here, that's all, why was everything for the building? Less two, so we're going to line four, for the building. Uh, so, is that what we're saying?
And we can call it, yeah, well, it can call it, they're going to bond for.
Well, that's what's important to.
Right, and when those numbers are out and ready, then.
I don't know, but we, there are some things that you shouldn't do if you don't know the act, that's what's, that's the starting.
Well, we're managing this for the project, we can math, if there's something that comes out too high, so then you have to, well, that, you have to change things.
But you've already spent a million dollars on a project, you can't back out of it, you're extremely right.
You don't back out on the time.
I think what you're saying, so, where, where is the mercy of whatever costs happen?
The only thing you can do is less than. Five, to a certain extent.
And, but you're, you're removing that option, because this one's fully, fully designed, it's fifteen thousand square feet, it's, it's, it's got some degree of, I'm going to say. Opulence, just because they're new, but maybe we should go for parts of them, and I'm not suggesting, but, but those are, it's an extreme. But that option is no longer available, because you've already gone down.
No, I, I don't think the numbers have been spoken here, Chris, it's an extreme. Four seven million dollars, that's, I tell you, that's not an extreme, it sounds like an extreme, but that's the cost of these foundations, of this business, they're not great.
And how much is secret?
I'm just disappointed that we don't talk about courts until after they land on the work table, and it's like, hmm, I'm surprised at that. Or we don't, we don't, we don't have the exact one. No, no, I, that is, J B, or the architect, we have a course for the construction of these buildings, from the means, vote for some sort of, you know, four hundred thousand square foot or something. Yeah, at this point, they're hard, we used to estimate what, you know, that, right?
And that's the cost estimate.
Five seven.
And that doesn't include furniture, right?
No, it's not, it's just, so he's right, but it's not going to be all about that.
Right, it's very hard, like Dave, that's what can be presented, because you're out. Okay, definitely, I think it's hard to work there.
But you can, you have, you can't, you're already spent the money. Shoot, it's nothing, a million dollars, the audio recreation, the demolition, the architects, blah, 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 I bet you it's a million dollars.
It could be, it could be, I don't think. You know, it's the same as if you're, you know, we're going to fix that headboard out there, and it's not going to do it, or we're going to do it, so. It's going to have a cost, it has.
We do have a statement, and I have to say, we've done a statement for all of our clients, and we're not going to commit as a dollar number of costs.
I don't think, well, that's, because of that specificity, what do you think, Dave, at the end of this project, we're going to bond the second? Think you're going to bond four later? Think you're going to bond six?
I don't know.
We're trying, we want to let some money be kept in as well, right, but we think we should get as. Remember, we're working so hard, even though we've always proved we didn't, and if not change or it's. You have to catch everything before, so that way we can get that.
Mayor, are we comfortable that state is not going to come in with timeless laws and say, have to move to a regional piece of walking, in which case the whole world's all under what we do?
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty comfortable with that, they don't think it pushes our, or anything like that.
They didn't want my brother listening to that.
I actually went to a meeting today.
Have to be perfectly opposite to, a hundred people who look into that, and it's not with me but one. The families are home for.
I don't.
That's what they have.
Comes to state aid, it's just.
Well, I went to a meeting today, that the governor was being speaker, and we, two local senators were there, they're the two holders. And they said they're not looking to draw down the racing, um, they do definitely believe that they have to do feasibility studies, if they have shared services, and it's pretty nervous, like it happened. But they're not coming in to say you have to go to state, because they're kind of set up like that, and we've paid a long time, and the state we've been spending on their end. Because there's a lot of things that are connected to being employees and services for our town, um, there's a debt and liability that the town goes for our employees. That the state's not, it's not going to take over.
Do I, man, your question, that, do I build this building, any, I don't need it. Okay, that's good, okay, I don't think so, I can work for us to see if it's not made for us. Unless, you know, the, the politicians, the people, the teachers, all got together, and say, you know, it's the worst, here we get the bad, it's a chance of that happening.
This is Boll Hill, uh, Boll Hill, uh, architects over there, I'm still, is the only one who checked with uh, this central power line, to make sure that maybe you don't feel the power on it, and maybe this is going to go with that. Positive transform, remember, we're going for merch, you know electricity is here, to a massive amount.
I think that point will be fine. Plus that, that to happen hurts somebody else, so.
And for a building to generate a major, we'll make sure that the building has enough natural gas capacity to run the regular power back.
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you take me to the right?
Okay. Something to do with what went on tonight, though.
Yes, um, as far as, I didn't really see it kind of every time, I mean, with the, with the, the. I mean, this is a great opportunity, bless the town, if we're going to save the super five and high, going to build the bridge, the, 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 the.